Good evening everyone and welcome to the Candidates Forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. My name is Carrie Moon Dupree and I am Vice President of Voter Service of the Northwest League. Tonight we welcome candidates running for the Northville City Council followed by the candidates running for Northville Mayor. We thank the Northville Library for allowing us to use their facility for this public education event. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate running for any office. The League does take positions on issues after careful study so that you may see our name attached to an issue that we are either advocating for or opposing. Membership in the League is open to all citizens who are at least 16 years old, so if you are interested in joining this public service organization, please let us know. Membership applications are available here tonight and they're outside on the table and at our website, L W V Northwest Wayne dot org. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums such as this one here tonight. The League also has prepared a nonpartisan voter guide which can be found online after September 24th at W W W dot vote four one one dot org. By typing in your voting address, you can view the races on your ballot and the candidates' responses to the questions posed by the League. You can also find the link to the voter guide on our website, L W V Northwest Wayne dot org. Just so you don't have to remember all that, these addresses are on the back of this bookmark that says "Vote" which is on the table as you came in. These bookmarks are free. Also, print copies of the voter guide will be available at the Northville Library in early October. And here's the important part, if you would like to ask questions of the candidates and we certainly encourage this, please write your questions on a card and hand it to one of the ushers in the aisle. Our moderator will ask as many questions as time allows. Questions should be brief, to the point, and should not include personal attacks on the candidates. We reserve the right to screen the questions for duplication and clarity. At this time, we ask all of our audience members to please be sure their cellphones are silenced. Thanks to the passage of Proposal Three in last November's election, voting in Michigan has become more convenient. Citizens who are not yet registered to vote can do so through Election Day. However, citizens must register in person at the Northville City Clerk's Office if they are registering less than 15 days before the election. Also, anyone can now request an absentee ballot for any reason and using that absentee ballot, they can vote by mail or in person at the clerk's office before 8:00 PM on Election Day. A mailed-in absentee ballot must be received by the clerk before 5:00 PM on the Friday before Election Day. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not the League of Women Voters. I'd like to introduce you to our moderator, League Member Susan Rowe, who will provide you with more details about tonight's forum. Susan?
We always have all these papers here. Good evening and again, my name is Susan Rowe and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. All three candidates running for the two seats on the Northville City Council and the two candidates for Mayor have been invited to participate in tonight's program. Candidates choose a number from a sack when they came into the auditorium which has determined placement on stage. Following the City Council forum, we will hold the forum for the two mayoral candidates. There will be a short break in between, so we ask that if you could just stay seated, that would help expedite things. As Carrie said, our questions tonight are coming from the audience and we have also received questions emailed to us in advance. Each candidate in the City Council forums will be allowed a one-minute opening statement, a one-minute response to each question, and then a two-minute closing statement. We will rotate the order of the candidate who responds first. League Member Deanna Masters, sitting up here in the front, will be our timer for this evening. She will be holding up cards so that the candidates know when their time is up and giving them a 30-second warning. Let's begin with our City Council candidates and we'll begin our opening statements this evening with Barbara Morosky Brown.
I drew one. So, hello, I am Barbara Morosky Brown and I'm a 33-year resident of the Northville community with six years here in our historic district. Since 1990, I have been a volunteer and leader in local organizations as well as Northville Public Schools. Professionally, I'm an experienced public policy analyst, I'm a government performance auditor, and I'm a risk analyst. I'm running for City Council because I want to preserve what's great about our town and while making the best decisions for tomorrow. I have the skills, experience, and leadership style to help make that happen. My priorities are better engage our community on important issues, promote strategic residential development, better support our residents and local businesses, maintain our aging infrastructure, and make the most of our limited resources. I will find common ground on tough issues, keep us focused on shared goals, and make sure we do what's best for our town. I'll bring a strong collaborative voice to our City Council and I'm asking you to trust me with your vote and our City vote.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Joseph Patrick Corville.
Thank you. I want to thank the League and I want to thank, and I could congratulate her for next year if I'm correct with the 100th year of League's establishment in 1920, so I won't be here next year, so I'd like to extend that now. We're also long-term residents. I say "we" on the list of five. My dad is in the audience is here. Originally bought a building in 1991 where we established our first law office. I bought my first home in 1998 and it's directly outside that window if you stand and look to your left. It impacts and will be later some of the questions that we answered. I've been on this board for 13 years inside of this room on the library district, serving and helping preserve the library through our district, including every issue dealing with labor negotiations, major renovations, hiring of a new director, millage campaigns. My current firm is on 324 East Main which is in the DDA in the historic district as well. I represent both corporations and family, both in an adversarial and defense mode and I promise that if elected and if elected. My last point was as an attorney, I represent and defend both clients, business and personal, and I think we need that in this town. I want to work collaboratively too and bring everybody inside the Northville to the table in terms of determining the best solution specifically for the project that's going to move forward in the Downs which is on the front of everybody's mind here and I promise to do so both for the benefits of the citizens and my family as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last presenter will be Marilyn Price.
Good evening. I, is this, can you hear me? I'm Marilyn Price. I've lived in Northville for 26 years. I have two sons. Both are K-12 graduates of Northville Public Schools. I've been involved in community service in Northville for the past 16 years and will detail some of that during my closing comments and I've been involved in just community activities and organizations for 26 years since we arrived here in town. I am a psychologist by training. I worked 12 years in New York State at a university counseling center and I believe my strengths are communication skills, the ability to bridge differences, and arrive at consensus. I have a depth of knowledge on how the city works given my four years in a council seat and I have the experience to help guide Northville through the challenging times that we're facing right now. I hope that we have earned your trust and I would appreciate your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question this evening is, the city of Northville participates in a number of partnerships with Northville Township and the city of Plymouth. What are the advantages and disadvantages of this? Should the partnerships continue or even be enhanced? And our first presenter will be, we'll start with Marilyn. Okay? The microphone. There's another one down here.
Oh, I like the one with out there.
Yes, we are involved in many partnerships with Northville Township and beyond. We have shared services agreements with the township. We were one of the first communities in the state that initiated that effort. Senior Services, Parks and Recreation, and Northville Youth Network are both, are all three involved between the township and the city and it's allowed us to provide a greater level of service to the community members here in Northville than we would be able to do on our own. We have dispatch arrangements with Northville Township. We have fire arrangements with Plymouth. That's allowed us to have a bucket truck that we don't have space to store here in Northville that is housed in Plymouth, so that's been a very important asset to the community. And coming in the future or continuing, we have training sessions planned for Planning Commission and BZA to enhance the ability of the members of those committees to perform their jobs. So I think the partnerships are really important and should continue. Thank you.
Mr. Corville?
Yes, I think probably because most of us are all well-learned and studied, a lot of these issues is going to be repeating some of the things that we say here, so I'll try to streamline my answer from what it is that Price has said. In addition to what she mentioned in terms of the emergency dispatch with the police and the fire, we also have the parks and rec that we use, the schools obviously as shared services, and the library which again, we're in here today and I've been a member up for 13 years. I know that the city of Plymouth and both Deputy Chief of Plymouth have a good relationship and are encouraged to be working together. Again, both cities booked their combined fire services, they bought a new ladder truck, reopened the fire station in downtown Plymouth, and have set the training program which has been discussed as well. So yes, I guess the answer simply put is I would encourage it, I'd look for it, I'd look for bridge for development of it. Anything to reduce the overall cost and provide more effective services to the residents is obviously a benefit.
Thank you. Ms. Morosky Brown?
We, I mentioned the Northville community which is where I came 33 years ago. I was in the township, but I didn't think of a distinction between the two. I know there is, I always knew there was, but we are a large community of over 40,000. If you think of it, it's more defined by the Northville Public School District in terms of how we think of ourselves. And I believe for shared services, they're very, very important. As long as Northville, which we are the heart of this larger community, we need to keep our autonomy. So it's leveraging resources, leveraging skill sets, it's very, very possible. And I actually spoke to City Council in, oh, it was back in a little past 2000, I was invited to speak to City Council on shared services and also back then, there was a conversation about shared governance. And I actually had been asked by the township and the city to look at those issues as a resident with a certain skill set and I was very much opposed to that. I didn't think it was good for the city.
Thank you. Our next question, what is your position on having recreational or medical marijuana facilities in the city of Northville? And we will start with Mr. Corville.
Well, I think it's been now 12 years since the legislation's been passed in terms of legalization of marijuana and there's several factors to consider. I don't know that I have an opinion, I don't know that I have a particular opinion on it without including those both from the local police and fire and just see what the complications and the necessary licensing and processing for those retailers would be. I currently also that it's still a federal law so and they're still working out in terms of the conflict that exists between both federal and state. So at this time, I would obviously be concerned about the increased crime, even over the benefit from it financially, but I would pass to be able to speak to those civic leaders and learn all the issues before I would weigh in on any opinion on that particular issue. But I have the same concerns as you, I've got children at home, just because like alcohol, marijuana is legal, I'm concerned about the abuse of it and causing any type of harm to any of our citizens or people themselves.
Thank you. Ms. Morosky Brown?
I'm sorry, yes.
Well, I think Michigan right now, both now with, particularly with recreational, but even when we had the medicinal, the laws just aren't in place yet to really understand what the parameters are for individual municipalities. I am not opposed to it, but I think right now it's too early. I would defer to our law enforcement and also local business community, but I think in the future, I think there is opportunity here. I recall being at a meeting where there was a decision being made about medicinal, this is going back three or four years at a Planning Commission meeting, and there was a guy saying, "I have to go, my wife needs it and I need to go Deean Arbor, wherever." So I think we have to look at this carefully over the next couple of years. I think there are opportunities here to help our residents, but I think we need to be cautious and I think the state needs to get their ducks in order.
Can you pass the mic down? Ms. Price?
When the legislation changed within the last six months or so, City Council took advantage of the window that we had to take temporary action that banned the sale of marijuana within the city prior to any guidelines from the state being developed. That's where we stand right now. As Barbara said, the state has not come out with a clear set of guidelines and so until that happens, it's kind of difficult to take a position one way or the other. I'm glad we had the opportunity to opt out initially before rules were clearly established and I stand by Council's decision to do that.
Next question will go to Ms. Morosky Brown. Do you believe we have an opioid abuse problem in Northville? If so, what will you do to curb it or offer rehabilitation to those afflicted?
There is an opioid epidemic everywhere and if we don't think there is, we're kidding ourselves. It crosses economic boundaries, age boundaries, and this is a crisis. It is a crisis of the making, in my opinion, of drug companies being complicit in the prescribing of it and then of course, it goes off-market to the black market. In terms of our own community, I would, you know, defer to law enforcement and then hope for really successful diversion programs that have been in place to help people that have this horrible addiction.
And Mr. Corville?
So of all the preparing I did for today's evening, that particular question is not one that I anticipated being asked, so I'll just tell you what I think here off the cuff. And again, my job is to be prepared, knowing what the issues are and go before somebody to be able to make a cognizant argument that hopefully compels them to agree with me and I'll continue to do those on all issues. In terms of the opioid crisis, of course it has to exist here. It's obviously not open enough for us to be able to tell with some of the same ramifications that come with the rest that they do from the criminal standpoint, but I'm in the courts every day. I know that there now, most of the officers have now drug recognition experts that are on place to be able to find out some of those crises. So yes, it's a crisis. I would love to be able to provide some type of local rehabilitation effort to help those people, but that's a big picture, that's a big question and it's got a big dollar sign on it. So we'd have to find out, working down both through federal and state and then locally, what that would cost and what it would look like.
Thank you. Ms. Price?
Thank you. Our local police department has been trained and supplied with Narcan kits and are able to respond in emergency situations as are police departments in township and other areas that might respond here in Northville. Being a mental health professional, obviously I have strong feelings about treatment of individuals who have substance abuse addictions and strongly support that kind of an effort as opposed to merely a punitive response to individuals. It's about saving lives and saving families and I think that's a crucial issue for any community. One of the most interesting tidbits I heard over time is that one of the places that individuals often go is to libraries and one of the frontline group that receive individuals who are in the middle of a crisis can be librarians, so.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Ms. Price. Northville Downs is on everyone's mind. Are you willing to participate in town hall meetings where residents could voice their concerns and exchange ideas on how to support development on this site? Why or why not?
The Downs has been a very hot issue in our community. To date, we have followed appropriate procedures in responding to the development that has been proposed. Planning Commission has held four meetings that have been open-mic opportunities for many in our community. We fielded questions in City Council meetings, emails, and phone calls about development at the Downs, so we are very invested in knowing what members of our community are interested in. I think it's important that everyone recognize that the process that we followed that has been laid out takes the issue initially to Planning Commission where it belongs. Planning Commission did its job and held the developer to requirements to change the PUD on multiple occasions. Ultimately, the PUD was withdrawn, there is no.
Thank you. Mr. Corville?
I think this may be one of the differences between me and some of the other candidates, at least of some of that statement, but I agree that procedurally, a lot of those things that went through the Planning Commission were done so and properly brought before them. The question is, would we encourage a town hall meeting? I would not foreclose on anything. I would want a meeting of everybody in town, several meetings, the opinions of everybody. I've met very, very smart people since I've decided to run, both before and after, but particularly on this particular issue and there's a ton of talent and I commend the commissioners, I commend City Council for the efforts that they've made, but there's more that can be done. I've talked to those people, I know that it exists, it'll impress everybody here and we encourage everybody hopefully to be involved in that process. So it's a simple answer to the question, section four, would I encourage a town hall meeting? Yeah, I would encourage every meeting, in-home, town hall, whatever other meeting people would be willing to participate in.
Ms. Morosky Brown?
A very high priority for me is keeping our community better informed on issues and also helping them be more readily engaged in the communication. And on the Downs project, and I've spoken about this related to the historic district and the planning, related to the Planning Commission, they have always done their due diligence. Oh, they have always done their due diligence. There has never been a question of that, but I think it's reaching out and having a more open forum. Saying to our citizens, "You have five minutes of fame at the podium and that's it," is not the way to have a conversation with the community. So I think we need to follow our due diligence, which we did do and I was very proud of our Planning Commission back on June 4th and then again, two weeks ago when they wanted to open up the master plan. But we need to do more and there's very simple ways to do it, informal, where people can just stand and voice their concerns and it's still not outside due diligence completely allowable and I would really push for that on all issues, not just the Downs.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Mr. Corville. Do you believe the tear-downs and new home builds in our established neighborhoods are an asset or a detriment to our city? How would you address citizens' concerns of overdeveloped?
Well, every neighborhood is distinct and possible. Some of the neighborhoods obviously have their own set of rules, of course speaking about the historic district, which my building is in down the street. So there has been some things, cities are somewhat limited in what they can do, at least traditionally through zoning and ordinances in terms of the tear-down and the building up of their homes, which a lot of times people will call big box homes. So what would I do with to addressing it? I've got those same concerns. I knocked my house down in 2008 and rebuilt it along the same character. Everybody deserves obviously to build a home that they want, deserve, but I think it has to be done in a way that continues to maintain the integrity and the look of Northville and the reason that we're all here. So I don't like to say that there's an objective standard to any person's desire to be able to do what they want. I think that we all benefit from the city, both for property taxes in general and from our individual value of our homes by finding a conscientious way of meeting everybody's requests.
Mr. Corville, I'm sorry. Ms. Morosky Brown?
Again, I am very heartened by the work that the Planning Commission has done over the past couple months, looking at the footprint ratio and making changes in terms of what is allowed on buildings. We have to respect the property rights of those that want to renovate or build new property, but we also need to respect the property rights of adjacent properties and on the street. And I, they've really, they're moving forward. I don't know if it's gone to council yet, I don't think it has, but it's very, very positive. The horse is out of the barn, particularly when you're talking about Cabbage Town, but not all the horses are out of the barn. So I think we can do, we're doing a good job moving forward on that and I look forward to what their final decisions are on that, but I think it's a great step forward.
Ms. Price?
The Planning Commission is studying, it's called floor area ratio and it allows for the use of floor space on all floors of a building rather than just ground floor and the footprint of the outline of the house. Several communities near us have used it and have used floor area ratio successfully. It doesn't curtail the size of the homes completely and make them the same size as original buildings possibly, but it does contain the size of the buildings and make it more appropriate to lot size and more consistent with neighboring homes. And I think that will be a very positive step if Planning Commission chooses to go forward with that and then brings it to council. We had a brief training session on it and Planning Commission is looking at it further and I think it's a very exciting tool for them, for us all to use and I look forward to seeing that at council.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Ms. Morosky Brown and it is, are there particular issues that led you to run for City Council? If so, what are they?
For decades, I have a passion for good governance. Oh, I'm kidding, I'm sorry, is my time started? Okay.
I'll start again.
I have a passion for governance and effectiveness in the way we manage governance for the better and better community. I've been like this since the 20s. I know I'm odd. I have the good fortune of it's not only my avocation, but it's my vocation and I have chosen not to run until this time, this is my first time running, because either I was covered under the Hatch Act or I was on the Legislative Action Network and so I wanted to stay neutral within our public schools and now I'm, and I had family commitments. Things happen. So here I am and this is my time and I'm really happy to put my hat into the ring on this, so.
Thank you. Mr. Corville?
So as I mentioned in my opening statement, we've always been involved in politics. I ran for student council when I was a child in high school, for student class president. I've been involved in several campaigns. I've been re-elected here in 2008 in the library, 2012, 2016, and with all that experience and finding my civic duty important and wanting to make Northville the best place I could be, this particular action really spoke to me because underneath the roof, the decisions that the government make underneath the roof of my house are all being discussed and affected. Because I live here, across the street from the post office, neighbors to the Downs, operating a business on Main Street, one week from the Katy proposal, and so it directly affects my ability to provide for my family and the quality of life that I want to maintain. So I wanted to take all that experience and advocate for the city of Northville.
Mr. Corville, time's up. Ms. Price?
Thank you. I am running for reelection as you may know. I have eight and a half years of experience on Northville School Board and the Board of Education and I really enjoyed that experience and four years ago, when there was a seat that was open for City Council, I chose to run for City Council to become involved in a different way in our community and bring some of the skills that I had developed and honed on school board to city governments. It's been a terrific experience. The people we have working in Northville for Northville are wonderful folks. We're in the middle of a whole lot of different issues that have the potential to really change Northville and I would like to continue to work on those issues with colleagues that I've worked on in the past. So that is why I made a decision to run for a second term.
Thank you. Let's track my chart here. Ms. Price? What is your number one priority for the city of Northville if you are re-elected or elected?
It's difficult for me to label any particular issue as number one. I think we have several that are real important to the city right now. One, obviously, is completion and carrying up the road bond. We have begun work. We had, along with many other communities, difficulty getting started because of the weather. We had this spring, there was an asphalt shortage, and we are a relatively small project compared with other communities that are so much larger than we are. We've managed to get work started now, though, and will be completing about a million dollars worth this fall, with and anticipate another couple million dollars worth in the spring. So, I think that's very important. Obviously, the reopening of the master plan and how that will affect possible future development in the Downs is very important. Planning Commission is over there tonight, making plans to reopen the master plan, and that will be a process, I think, that will be very important. Also, working on the financial stability of the city is another issue.
And Mr. Corvo?
Was the question of what's the number one priority?
Your number one priority.
Okay, so, just tailing on the previous question somewhat, why I ran, it's Downs. Downs is my first, second, and third. I've got 30 different issues that the city, not all, you know, both good and bad, are currently working on. Educating myself and speaking to those of decision-makers in town, and those all need to be addressed, and I'm confident based on the talent that's above me, regardless of who gets hired to be in this position, that those will be dealt with. But the difference that I think I can make, again, and my number one priority, is the Downs. It's both, I see it as an opportunity. I see it as an opportunity to create a legacy in a specific period of time, on a large piece of land, that's going to be here long past all of us, and I want to be a part of that. I want to make sure that everybody's part of that. So, Downs is first through 99, and then there's everything else.
Ms. Borowski-Brown?
Well, I am not a single-issue candidate. I multitask, and that's very, very important in this job. You do really hot-button issues, but you got to do the boring stuff. I don't consider it boring, but you, the everyday contracts, budgets, those sort of things. But I would say, right now, we're at a point in time where the development within our city is extremely critical. We don't know what's going to happen with a new developer coming in. So, I think making sure we right-size our commercial and residential development, it's got to be a priority now to make sure we get things in place so we keep the charm of our town while still growing in the future. But on a secondary is also, and they go hand-in-hand, is keeping our community engaged, informed, and giving them a forum to speak about these issues. Again, they're linked. And the last would be making the most of our limited resources, and that's just an ongoing.
Thank you. The next question, we will begin with Ms. Borowski-Brown. What are your thoughts about the recent announcement regarding the post office expansion or possible relocation?
Yeah, that's brand-new, but it's been bubbling for 20 years. I mean, ever since the city bought the property adjacent to it to give the option for expansion. So, this is in its infancy, and I hope all of you will take the time to write to the post office, because they're seeking public comment right now, and I understand they listen, so please do that. My personal, my opinion on this, from a strategic development standpoint, is there were three options proposed by the city at request. One was over at the Foundry facility. That's going to be, hopefully, our creative and entertainment district. That's the wrong place for it. I also think the McDonald's Ford building over at Northville Main, Seven Mile, is inappropriate, because that will eventually be an alternate gateway to our city, and I don't think an industrial facility, which is what a sorting facility is, is appropriate for there. Over here, I have big concerns for, I'd want to see a traffic study, because Wing Street already has issues, and if they're going to expand it, it's about a third.
Thank you, your time is up.
It needs to be looked at.
Next, we'll have Mr. Corvo.
Yeah, I mentioned that, I think, previously. It's directly across the street from my house. So close, I can hear the conversations that we're having at 2:00 in the morning, and knocking on the sorting. And so close that I'm in the middle of that street, behind those 18-wheelers, or whatever you call them, trying to back into the spot that they currently have. So, I'm obviously going to vote, again, through the open communication, which is the best interest of Northville and its citizens. I think the deal-breaker, in my mind, after I have, did bring with me today, I do have the information, I'll leave out in front, of the contact information, we have 30 days to be able to voice our opinion on that, on the proposed relocation or expansion of the post office. I personally would like to try to find a solution that would allow smaller-scale stay there, maybe for retail stamps, P.O. box, and allow all the benefits to come into town that they want, and allow that sorting center, which nobody would appear to own, the trucks, at another location. Thank you.
And Ms. Price?
The city received notification late this summer of the post office plans to move. They're looking for a two-and-a-half acre parcel. Their first priority is in the city. Obviously, we don't have many two-and-a-half acre parcels, so it's a challenge right there. I want to make clear to community members, there's a great deal of concern if we use the current location, the lot to the south that the city owns, that somehow the art house and the dog park would be at risk. There is no plan to modify either of those community resources. I think the best option, the most preferred option, would be to keep a retail center in town, probably at the site where they are now, and then do the processing center in a place that has more room. I understand the concern of the residents in terms of truck traffic and the noise and the safety issues that that concerns, and also for the post office, who wants to have...
I'm sorry. Time, your parking. Okay, next, the question is, what are the biggest challenges that you see are facing Northville's next city council members? And we'll start with Mr. Corvo.
I bet everybody's guess is what I'm going to say. It's going to be, I think, just finding a development of the Downs property that is going to meet all our needs, from the aesthetic to the walkability, to the commercial needs, the business needs, the quality of life that we lead, the various traffic congestion that everybody believes that are going to exist, the infrastructure tackling that the type of development's going to have, the daylighting of the river, the potential condos and apartments that are going to go in here. Most people are, have identified the problem. What I'm there is to look for solutions, and I am just trustful that the corporations and the developers that are going to come in here are going to magnanimously offer a solution that's going to best meet our needs. I think there's going to have to be some significant pushback. We're going to have to advocate for our city, and I'd like to open up those discussions of what we need to have.
Thank you, your time is up. Ms. Borowski-Brown?
Yeah, I would say, without a doubt, I anticipate that this is not the last we've heard from a developer for the Northville Downs site, which is technically the racing track district on our master plan. So, I think that is really keeping very, very vigilant, and really making sure, we have a narrow window of opportunity right now, because we have no plans on the table, to really take action to make sure we have a clear vision for what we want there, do our own traffic study, independent, and really take that action, and we've got to get that done very quickly. Also, for myself, I want to begin, it would be a four-year term, and I want to begin, we, you know, we need to always plan for a rainy day, and you don't plan for a rainy day right when it starts to rain. So, I want to start looking at that now, in terms of efficiencies and limited resources, and making sure on that, because, you know, we could have a downturn, and then we know what happened last time. It's really very tough, because we have a very tight budget.
Thank you. Our next question, we will begin with...
I'm sorry. My answer is a little bit different from my two colleagues here, and I'm responding to the specific note in the question, that what is council's challenge? The one issue that council deals with independently or by themselves is financial status within the city. We have a lot of help on a lot of the other issues that have been talked about tonight. Planning Commission plays a role in development, zoning ordinances play a role in development. We're not out there working on our own for that. But fiscal responsibility belongs to council. So, I think the challenges that we face, we've managed to fund the health care and the retirement obligations at a level that is higher than most other communities in the state. We are protecting Northville's ability to function as a community, and we are the ones who are responsible for that, and I think that's very important. I am extremely interested in continuing to work in...
Thank you, Ms. Price. I'm sorry, your time is up. The next question, we will begin with Ms. Price. Do you think it's important to increase diversity in Northville? If so, how?
And then my question back would be, what kind of diversity? I guess the way that I will respond to that is, how do we increase younger families, millennials, and a broader type of individual that calls Northville home? And I think we have an avenue for doing that through the development projects. We need to be incredibly careful about density, about traffic increases, and all of the issues that we've all been talking about for a long period of time. But we aren't going to get younger families and millennials moving into our community if everything costs $600,000. The younger generation wants to walk. They don't want to have yards, large spaces, they don't want yards. We need to respond to development, we need to look at development as an opportunity to expand the diversity in the community, and I think that's an important issue.
Thank you. Mr. Corvo?
Yeah, I agree. I concur with Ms. Price. I would add in there, additionally, young, the old, too, are on fixed incomes and want to stay in Northville and enjoy the benefits as well, to be able to have some affordable housing, and those come with challenges, and a lot of people have identified those challenges. Again, I think we're full chalk on all the problems that we currently may be facing, and I want to be able to find solutions to those, and affordable housing is one of those. And I also would like to try to potentially find some retail diversity, and with density, which is a word, and we need further definition, but there's hope that, at least in the business district, what I'm a big supporter of and a part of, that there'll be some more retail diversity in town, both in supporting the local businesses we have and bringing other ones that this town will benefit for the use of. So, yes, I'm for diversity based on that definition that I give.
And Ms. Borowski-Brown?
Diversity has many meanings. It's been discussed here. I think, we know, typically, it's talked in the broader picture in our nation as diversity that is racial or ethnic diversity, and Northville's never been terribly diverse in those areas. I am heartened to see a lot of change in the township since I first moved here, and I don't know what the solution is to change that. It certainly would be nice if we could, but really, what we do have control over directly is economic diversity, and we don't want to become a community that we price out our seniors, people on fixed income, and our young families, and we need to stay diverse in that way. That we have control over, and the other, we can have conversations on how we can make that better.
Thank you. The next question, we will begin with Mr. Corvo. Do you feel that senior citizens' funding and programs that are currently offered through the city can be maintained or improved going forward because of the increase with baby boomers and such? Why or why not?
There's a lot of questions, then that one question. I was asked what the best, the number one priority was in terms of what I think, and I disagree with Ms. Price, that city council should be more involved in opening that up in terms of the Downs, although we have all those other resources, I wouldn't limit anybody's in terms of finding a solution. In terms of the senior and the Allen Terrace and some of the funding that we get for that, I would find it to be, obviously, a very important thing, and I would pledge to be able to keep the services that we have and find ways to expand services to seniors as they present themselves. There's a senior here that I call Dad sitting in the front row as well, so...
I was listening very carefully to your answer.
So, yes, it's an important, to me, I think it's important to any viable city that we want to call home.
Ms. Borowski-Brown?
First, I'd like you to define senior. Because I think ARP would say I've been one for a while, so, but I think Northville really showed its vision for supporting senior services by building Allen Terrace. Was that back in the '70s? I mean, that was just amazing that we did that. It was just so much visioning, and I love having Allen Terrace in our community. We do a lot with shared services for seniors. We have shared services. I love the Senior Rec Center. I love that it's going to be close to home when I'm not driving anymore, and the transportation that we offer. I think we need to, as we have a growing senior population, we just need to look at how to enhance that, how to maintain it, how to enhance it, how to fund it, and I think that's where really shared services with our neighbor and community is very important.
Thank you. Ms. Price?
We've been very pleased, I can't remember, that we have been able to fund a new roof for Allen Terrace. We have upgraded their air cooling systems. We are upgrading hot water system and functioning. All of those are very important issues for the residents who live there, who call it home, and it allows them to stay in the city of Northville, which I think is incredibly important. We've expanded the bus service through senior services. That partnership that we have with Northville Township is very important. It allows mobility for seniors and allows them to still engage in the community. And when I was on the Senior Services Council, there are a number of activities that are programming that are provided for seniors, and every one of them is a valuable resource in our community. And I certainly support continued services and expansion as we can that provide valuable lifestyle changes for seniors.
Thank you. Our next question begins with Ms. Borowski-Brown. What specifically would you do to improve roads and infrastructure, and how would you look at funding them?
Well, we have pretty significant fun, oh, sorry. Our funding right now is quite significant, and the community stood behind the council's decision for the newest road bond, and we're seeing the results of that to date. There was just an update on that at the city council meeting last night. But we really need to always look at our water and our sewer and keep, but we now have the equipment that we can, what was the cost of that, it was quite expensive, it was huge, yeah, but we can go in and we can look at all our service lines. We have an aging infrastructure, we must maintain that. Right now, our budget is good, but let's see what we're going to find when we start taking those scopes in, you know? So, but it is, I think, right now, we're okay. I don't think we need to bond any more money on it.
And Mr. Corvo?
So, yes, again, it ties back into my popular theme for tonight, in terms of what the future's going to bring to development, in terms of our infrastructure. That should be, the cost of which, both the study and the implication, should have to be paid by the developer. That sounds like the cost that the city should have to do. There is a plan in place, I'm actually taking my notes on it here today, and I made a copy of this that's on the table, in terms of the proposed roads that are being both fixed and repaired over the next couple of years, I guess for the next seven years, probably. And the robot, which is what I call it, is advanced piece machinery that we just recently bought, that can get in and be able to provide pictures that are so accurate, you can see the development of potential cracks in our water and sewer lines. So, I think that the city's done a good job of maintaining at least an aging infrastructure right now with the challenges that we have, but that's going to change if you put 500 new developers potentially in the Downs and want to address that.
Thank you, Mr. Corvo. Ms. Price?
I would echo others' comments about working with the road bond. That's clearly a very important issue in Northville, because the roads have been terrible. One of the other things that we've done that is, that I think will provide a real assistance in the city is that we're replacing the water meters. The old water meters, some 30 years old, allow for leakage that doesn't record the usage of the water, and we end up with high flow that we are then charged for by Great Lakes Water Authority, and it impacts the water rates that we all pay. So, replacing those water meters... So replacing those water meters is going to really assist in the city. We've just approved a significant amount of money to be able to do that replacement. And I forgot the other part of the question. I'm sorry.
How would you fund?
Oh, funding, yes. Well, the road bond is funding it, and in order to do some of the... I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I feel your pain.
It's a clock.
Next question, we'll begin with Ms. Price. What would you do to attract more mom and pop businesses in Northville?
We work with the DDA. That's a very important operation here in the community. I'm on the, the executive board of the DDA, and that, that council, that committee is always working to expand the number of businesses and outreach to the business community to try and encourage businesses to come to Northville. We've seen expansions in the restaurant businesses that have been valuable additions to Northville. It's difficult when, with the advent of all the online shopping that we all participate in, to encourage businesses to open doors in the community and, and try and sustain shopping. We've had several cherished businesses that have closed recently that, that that was just such a big challenge for, and they've been replaced by service.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. Corvo?
That's a good question, and an important one. I would encourage local residents that already know the value of living in Northville to be able to start a business there in Northville, and both from a quality of life standpoint and from the economic standpoint. Have our dollars bounce from, like mine, from home to business to gas station to grocery store to school over and over against an oil benefit. And, and I think we could probably, although it's probably not much of a secret anymore, but do a better job of communicating through the various social medias and becoming a public figure to all those around, me personally, the city in general, of all the things that we have to offer, and letting those people that know that are living under a rock what a great place this is to live, and what a great place this would be to bring their business, and the amount of people that we have here that are able to support those businesses, and then have conscientious council people in place to be able to support them through the DDA and whatever other measures we can. I mean, again, I have a business in town.
Thank you, Mr. Corvo. And Ms. Borowski-Brown?
Well, the first thing I would say is we all must shop local. Shop local first, that's the key. But in terms of, it is the DDA and the Chamber of Commerce that play the lead role in this. They're our ambassadors for bringing in the right mix of businesses. And I would like to have more dialogue with those, those two entities. In fact, I was at the DDA meeting this morning and mentioned it, particularly with the challenge of the mix of businesses. As many of you know, Carolyn, you just mentioned, is that we have been losing boutiques and other places to financial services and mortgage services, which are very valuable members of our business community, but they don't help with walkability. If you want, you want to walk somewhere, you want to window shop. So I would hope there could be a better plan. I have read a number of white papers in communities across the country that have struggled with the same problem. It's, it's the mix of businesses. It's getting enough for the walkability to make it walkable. Some have too many restaurants. So there are models out there that we can look to.
Your time is up, I'm sorry. Okay. This ends the questioning portion of the evening. We will now give each candidate two minutes for their closing statements, so hopefully they can add to what may have been cut off. So we will begin with Ms. Price.
Thank you. I feel that I bring experience to the position of city council. I spent eight-and-a-half years on Northville Board of Education, served as president, vice-president, and on all subcommittees on the board. I've been a member of Northville Youth Assistance, now Northville Youth Network, for sixteen years, and have served as a liaison when I've been a council member and a board of education member, and also served as a city representative in the four-year span in between when I wasn't sitting on a board, and have chaired and been a member of multiple subcommittees in that organization. Some of you in here, most of you, I guess, by looking at everyone, will remember Mothers' Club of Northville. I was a member of that for fourteen years. They do, did a tremendous partnership with Northville Public Schools. I was a Northville Newcomers back in the day member, and I've been in Northville Rotary for three, three-and-a-half years. So I have spent a number of years being involved and engaged in the city of Northville. In my four years on council, I have served on the DDA and Chamber Executive Committees. I am the chairperson of the Board and Commission, Board and Commission Chairperson, who interviews and recommends individuals to sit on Northville's boards and commissions. I've been on the Liquor Control Board, Northville Youth Network, as I mentioned, senior services, Road Bond Committee. I'm very proud of the things that council has accomplished while I've been on the board. We've increased financial or fiscal responsibility. We've improved our communication and transparency. Board meetings, or council meetings are now recorded. They're available online. If you can't make it but want to know what happened, you can view that at your own convenience. We've passed the road bond. That was a very important step for our community. We've protected green space in Northville by expanding Maplewood Park. That was a tremendous resource for the individuals that live in that general area, and we've protected our neighborhoods with fire and police.
We now go on to Mr. Corvo?
So I don't know that I'll need two minutes. I've got a thing, my door, some of my literature passed out on the table that you can look regarding all the various boards and things that I've been on in the past. But in the future, I want to sit as a city council person because of the reasons I sat forth here tonight. As I mentioned, the decisions that are facing the city are the same ones that are under the roof of my house as we sit here today and as the businesses I sit every day. I, I don't want the status quo. I want better than the status quo. We have an opportunity here in the development of the Downs, both as an attorney, a businessman, and a father with kids currently in school. All of those things need to improve. And I want to give every effort as an advocate of the city and an independent voice to be able to use all the skills that I brought to the table and the ones that I represent my clients with every day to benefit the city as a whole. In designing a platform, I sat down with my daughter, who's now thirteen. And you've heard this now several times in various...
I love hearing it every time.
And when she's asking me, well, what does it all mean, and what's Dad doing, and interested to know, we designed together what it is that I promised to do. And my platform simply is I promise to work hard. I promise to be approachable to everybody and anybody that wants to have my ear in terms of any problems that exist. I promise to be accessible. I promise to stay informed. I promise to listen to everyone, to be creative in finding a solution, finding a solution that doesn't exist out there yet. And I promise to be, make mistakes, but I promise that I'll be held accountable for those mistakes. I live across the street, two thirty-seven South Main, if anybody wants to come and knock on my door. And finally, I promise to make and lead Northville a better place than I find it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Borowski-Brown?
Well, thank you for the thoughtful questions this evening. Kept us entertained. In closing, I'm going to actually put a little more flush around me as a person. I grew up in northwest Detroit. I attended Catholic Elementary and Mercy High School, and my family actually introduced me to Northville long ago because we would just come due west on Seven Mile. We've went out to picnics here and come downtown. My late husband, Dan, and I moved here in eighty-six. My children, Adrian, Garrett, and Lauren, that's right there, all graduated from Northville Public Schools, and I currently have three grandchildren here in the public school district. And my daughter, Adrian, married a local guy, a Neil Kersey, and we had a Northville merger. Since nineteen ninety, I've served in numerous leadership positions in our community. I began out in my homeowners association, and as president, my focus was investing in long-term neglected parks and common areas. I became very involved with challenges facing the township, both as a resident advocate and also issues related to the huge growth that was happening at that time. This included what I had mentioned, the Northville Two Thousand Committee with the township and city, where I was an invited speaker for Northville City Council on government, governance options, and also shared services. I was also involved with Northville Public Schools, serving on many committees over two decades, especially in finance, infrastructure, and managed growth. I also headed up the Legislative Action Network and served on PTA co-council, and I, in twenty-ten, I was parent of the year. It was just the longevity. Professionally, I have a degree in public affairs from Wayne State University. I spent fourteen years with G I O., which is the Government Accountability Office for the U.S. Congress, where in doing that, I evaluated efficiency and effectiveness of federal, state, and local programs, and I was a certified financial manager. I then became a consultant doing the same for public and private sector clients, and that included...
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Oh. Vote for me.
Thank you. We'd like to thank the council candidates who participated in tonight's forum and also to you, the audience, and we will take a short break while we set up for the mayoral session.